Welcome to the Portland City Council. We are, today is January 22nd, 2020. Caller, would you please call the role? Fritz?
Here.
Udaly?
Here.
Wheeler?
Hardesty?
Person to, Commissioner Fritz is participating by telephone. Failure to do so would jeopardize the public interest, health, safety, or welfare of the city of Portland. Failure to allow participation of the city council members by electronic communication would jeopardize the public interest. Are there any objections to Commissioner Fritz participating by phone? See none? Thank you. Mayor Wheeler is also not physically present but was contacted and given an opportunity to participate by phone. And I'm sorry, it was council member's objection, so not the, I didn't ask the public. Thank you.
I knew that.
Okay. Before we begin, will the city attorney please read the rules of decorum?
Welcome to Portland City Council. The city council represents all Portlanders and meets to do the city's business. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during city council meetings so everyone can feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the city, or with the council clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. If it does not, you may be ruled out of order when testifying. Or sorry, may be ruled out of order. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary, and please disclose if you're a lobbyist. If you're representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When you have 30 seconds left, a yellow light goes on, and when your time is done, a red light goes on. If you are in the audience and would like to show your support for something that is said, please feel free to do a thumbs up. If you want to express that you do not support something, please feel free to do a thumbs down. Please remain seated in council chambers unless entering or exiting. If you are filming the proceedings, please do not use bright lights or disrupt the meeting. Disruptive conduct such as shouting or interrupting testimony of council or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being ejected for the remainder of the meeting. After being ejected, a person who fails to leave the meeting is subject to arrest for trespass. Thank you for helping your fellow Portlanders feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe.
Thank you. We will begin with communication items. Caller, would you please read the first item?
Item 51, request of John Cruz to address council regarding participatory budgeting in Portland.
Good morning, welcome. You can bring the mic closer to you if that's more convenient.
Is this eight inches? Okay. Hi, good morning. My name is Jonathan Cruz, and I'm an organizer for Participatory Budgeting Oregon. I participate on advisory councils in Portland parks such as the Native American Community Advisory Council, the Park Lane Advisory Council, and the North Portland Parks Advisory Group. My friend Shonda Evans came to speak about her experience in a PB process in New York a couple weeks ago, and I'm here today to speak on my experiences and city advisory bodies as an indigenous person, as a young adult, and as a poor person, and why PB or participatory budgeting can change the dynamics of these groups and ultimately the ideals of the city itself. City advisory bodies depend on the labor of people who volunteer their time to provide city bureaus and city counselors with information. Although these advisory bodies are spaces for people to give feedback to city staff on the impact of their operations, there is often unfinished business of elaborating plans of action and making specific community commitments, or making specific commitments to communities which offer hopes of progress towards genuine participation. As Office of Civic Life continues its revision of its standards of conduct for city boards and advisory bodies, serious attention must be considered to the recruitment and the retention of volunteers, particularly those like me who are young, poor, and a person of color. In a time in which young people lack financial stability or prosperity, often working multiple jobs to survive in Portland, volunteering is not entirely possible, yet the decisions made in these spaces serve to impact us the most. In an advisory model, an ideal city government is structured to be a managed centrist majority, not the full expression of power from political minorities. As a youth, oh, sorry, political minorities such as youth, people of color, and poor people, whose participation is narrowed to function for our self-preservation. When people like me join advisory spaces, it is at the expense of our survival. Participation in this ideal government is often a response to threats of a representative government, not one that is full of joy or trust. Our current advisory structure for democratic authority fails to meet individual needs for confidence in government and shared prosperity. PB is a mechanism through which people can change their relationship to authority, where we can shift power and alter hierarchies of order by setting new obligations and norms for community engagement, civic deliberation, and political efficacy. City council can express visionary leadership in adopting new ways of democratic self-governance by convening a steering committee of community leaders and residents to troubleshoot problems in implementing PB in Portland. This can be done by new revenues but can also be done by reallocating existing funds, reshaping existing programs, and setting consistent community engagement standards for collective community ownership in the development process. Our city needs to address the structural issues in our democracy which begins with rethinking the ways that, in which we can employ investments to improve its process to be inclusive but, and participatory. PB is a proven mechanism for learning about our democracy and changing our democracy.
Thank you. Your time is up. How much more you got left?
Just one sentence.
Okay, you can read your one sentence.
The idea that we must have as a city is to serve, to promote agency for our community members to participate in their collective care.
Thank you so much. That was very well done. Appreciate you being here today.
Thanks.
Caller, who's next? Oh, I'm sorry, did you want to?
I just want to mention that Commissioner Hardesty and my staff are going to be meeting with participatory budgeting advocates, I think probably from your group, so we're interested and we're looking into it.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Caller, the next item, please.
Item 52, request of Diana Mezenhelter to address council regarding net zero emissions by 2025.
Welcome. Please state your name for the record and make yourself comfortable with that mic. You can move it to make it fit where you need it.
It's my first time with bifocals, a little scary.
Know the feeling.
The IPCC report right before the COP25 in Madrid said that globally, carbon emissions need to drop by at least 8% annually to avoid catastrophic climate change. Since the U.S. is the second-largest emitter of greenhouse gases in the world and the highest emitter per capita, our required action is higher and faster than that. We are currently on a path towards 3.7 degrees centigrade, and at this level, 60% of global crops fail, are predicted to fail, yet emissions overall keep increasing. We have to act now, and it will require a World War II type of mobilization. The City Climate Action Plan is too little, too late. We need annual concrete steps towards a rapid managed decline of fossil fuels. If Portland is seen internationally as a green city, can't set the stage in terms of what needs to happen, then who will? Given how repeatedly scientists are telling us that we must do more faster, Extinction Rebellion pushes towards net zero 2025, knowing that the higher faster bar for developed countries and that we haven't seen the full impact of the albedo effect and feedback loops. We will not come close to reaching the timeframe set by the IPCC, which continues to shrink, if we don't put into place ambitious goals now. 2050 is far too late for net zero, and yet those within the city who measure emissions tell us we are not even on track for that. Therefore, XR demands that you consider annual concrete steps towards managed fossil fuel decline, clean energy investments that move away from auto-centric transportation planning, widespread energy conservation measures, carbon rationing, low-cost accessible zero-emission public transit, carbon sequestration through natural means, and more. In September, we delivered demands for a concrete action plan for 2020 towards reaching that zero more rapidly, and such measures will not only create jobs as we transition to a more just and healthy society, but would be model for other municipalities to follow. We know there is not a plan, if there's not a plan, then change will not be forthcoming. The five-year timeframe for the city's climate action plan has demonstrated inadequacies given rapidly changing conditions, and so it's critical to come up with annual goals and concrete steps in line with what the best science is telling us, even if it's in the form of a simple goals checklist each year. Extinction Rebellion supports an inclusive citizens' assembly process involving youth, frontline communities, grassroots climate organizations, and citizen stakeholders, including ourselves, and we also have to balance the critical timelines facing us and should not postpone upgrading the climate, the city's climate action plan in 2020. We must begin by expanding who's at the table and identifying steps so that everyone can get behind and start implementing as we work through the more difficult issues. The time to act is short, and we see, hope to see more of Portland's bold leadership in the forefront as municipalities around the country are taking actions.
Ma'am, how much more do you have?
Two sentences.
Okay.
Many other municipalities and states and climate think tanks have ideas that should be tried here, and in turn, we need to be more, we need to do more to model for others. Believe the science and act accordingly.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next item, caller.
Item 53, request of Kate Mulliken to address council regarding the transitional tiny home village proposed in St. John's.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Wasn't there one other person testifying on the same issue? Could we call both of them up?
54.
Yes, please.
Number 54, request of Lindsay Jansen to address council regarding the transitional tiny home village proposed in St. John's.
Might as well do it, you may start.
Great. Good morning, I'm Kate Mulliken. St. John's welcomes the Village Coalition is a group of nearly 300 neighbors supporting the transitional tiny home village. It's proposed for the property owned by the St. John's Christian Church, and I support their efforts. I'm aware that there is a local group of my St. John's neighbors, including the new leadership of the St. John's Neighborhood Association, that opposes this project, and that is exactly why I'm here today. I wanted to voice my opinion about the project, so thank you for that opportunity. I am a homeowner in St. John's, and I have been for nearly 15 years, only four blocks from the proposed site. That is where I'm raising my two elementary-age daughters, and I have worked in education my entire career, and for the last eight years, I have worked at the preschool that borders the proposed site. Before students arrive, the teachers at our school head outside, and we comb the area to pick up needles, sometimes human waste, and other debris as needed. Occasionally, we have to wake somebody up and let them know it's time for them to move along before our students arrive. Parents of our students in opposition to this project have asked, but what will we tell the children? It seems that they assume that the children's innocence will somehow be tarnished if they see homelessness, or that the children might be afraid of people who are experiencing homelessness. My answer to that question is that we tell them that we live in a community where we care about one another, no matter our differences, because of our humanity. Children of this age learn by what is modeled. Let's show our children that we did something to support our neighbors who are already living in St. John's without a safe, dry, or secure place to call home. Let's show them that we used our resources and put in the effort to hear what people needed, to provide them with some supports towards their dreams of a permanent house. Let's make visible the words of Creta Scott King, who said, "The greatness of a community is most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members." As part of the St. John's welcomes the Village Coalition, a teacher at the neighboring preschool, and a neighbor, I'm committed to working with the Joint Office of Homeless Services, Do Good Multnomah, and the parents of my young students to ensure that this village is a success. Thank you for considering my point of view.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Awesome. Good morning. My name is Lindsay Johnson, and I'm here today on behalf of the St. John's welcomes the Village Coalition. We're an active group of neighbors who support the transitional tiny house village on the St. John's Christian Church lot. Last spring, I actually helped launch the coalition with around 20 other neighbors when I was working at the St. John's Center for Opportunity. Since then, we've grown to become a vibrant and active network of nearly 300 neighbors who have signed our letter of support. This includes both housed and unhoused neighbors, business owners, faith-based leaders, and leaders of key community groups and schools. I'm also a mom of a four-year-old who goes to preschool about five blocks away from the proposed site. In both of my capacities as a neighborhood activist and a mom, I want to extend my gratitude to the Joint Office, Mayor Wheeler, and all the commissioners in support of this project. I've spent a lot of time working with houseless neighbors in North Portland. I'm so grateful that we have groups who care deeply about serving our community members experiencing houselessness, like the All One Group, the Hot Supers Crew, the North Portland Health Clinic, Terrence Moses and His Awesome Group, and so many others. However, the need for services and housing remains significant. Creating a village in St. John's, especially one that is professionally designed and supported by Do Good Multnomah, is a positive step in addressing the crisis our neighborhood and our city faces. We know there is a select and very loud group of neighbors who are actively trying to stop this project. This last fall, our coalition hosted a conversation project funded through Oregon Humanities in an attempt to reach across the aisle and build understanding. We are disappointed in the tactics that the opposition has employed despite these bridge-building efforts, including staging a takeover of the St. John's Neighborhood Association. This group has threatened lawsuits against the various groups involved in the project and have personally attacked leaders involved, including myself. Despite all of the harmful and outright discriminatory language this group has been using, there is a lot of positivity and support for this tiny house village. The fact that we have nearly 300 supporters signed on before groundbreaking is pretty awesome. We know that the village is not the end-all-be-all, and that neighbors, including members of our coalition, still have questions, but the village is an important resource that we are fortunate to have in St. John's, and we have faith that we can constructively and collaboratively figure out the unknowns. Plus, it's just really cool seeing a faith-based community who has long sat on open land, offering up their property as a solution to Portland's housing crisis. Thank you for making this village possible, and we look forward to working with the Joint Office, Do Good Multnomah, and future residents on positive ways to build community.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Udaly has a question.
Thank you, Madam President. Really, I just wanted to thank you for taking the time to come down here today and for your advocacy for the village. We faced similar opposition to Argyle Village in Canton. Oh, Carla's timing me out.
Your time's up.
Maybe we should have that. And I think, as most people know, that village has been a real success, so I'm sorry that this conversation is so contentious and that, for what you're going through, and I support you, and we will continue working to build those bridges.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I also want to add my appreciation. This is hard. We've got a lot of people who are suffering on our streets, and I am so grateful and appreciative of people like you who understand that we all have a role in actually helping people who are, who are suffering, right? So, in my neighborhood, we also have an anti-houseless group, but they're not actually offering to provide housing so that those folks don't have to be on the street. And so I thank you very much for being here. The work that you're doing is important, and the role model that you're setting for your children and all those other little children going to that preschool is very impressive. Have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm almost crying now. I gotta put my glasses back on. What time is it? Caller, would you read the first time-certain council item number 56, please?
We have one more communication.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm rushing along, okay. Would you read that, please, caller?
Number 55, request of David Potts to address council regarding Eastside Public Safety Action Coalition.
So sorry, David. Wasn't trying to cut you out. Please, welcome.
Well, I was added later because no one wanted to come, I guess because Mayor Wheeler signed her today.
Oh, well, what are we, Top Liver?
Evidently, because I was filling, anyway.
Well, I appreciate you being here.
Good morning, Commissioner Hardesty, and Commissioner Udaly, and Commissioner Fritz.
Good morning.
My name is David Potts, and I'm here on behalf of the Eastside Public Safety Action Coalition. As concerns about public safety have increased across the city of Portland, a diverse group of stakeholders representing the West Side got together to explore collaborative ways of improving safety of everyone across Multnomah County. The mission of the Public Safety Action Coalition is to be a voice for the community, interacting with government, nonprofits, and local businesses in support of programs to reduce crime and create a safe and welcoming environment for all Portlanders. Among their immediate goals are increasing funding for jail beds to reduce the revolving door that puts repeat, often violent criminals immediately back on the states, on the streets, create offender accountability and access to justice for victims, promote law enforcement with clear guidance and direction to enforce ordinances and laws deemed a community priority, support effective efforts to establish a compassionate avenue to managing the rising drug addiction epidemic, and establish more effective wraparound services for drug treatment. West Side Peace Act is now up and running and shows promise for improving conditions on the West Side. East Portland has never had an organization like Peace Act. Our immediate goal is to create a peace act for East Portland. We hope to hold well-attended monthly meetings, bringing in concerned groups of renters, property owners, businesses, social service agencies, and government leaders. East Portland's best hope for improved livability is to join with like-minded groups across the city to speak with a unified voice for our vision for a better Portland. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller, would you read item 56, please?
Adopt the Invasive Species Strategy 2020-2030: Portland at the Crossroads Policy.
Now, I appreciate the mayor so much more. I understand now why he's moving paper around all the time. Colleagues, this resolution establishes the city's policy on combating invasive species to better protect the city's natural and built assets, and to protect the health of our urban watersheds. City Council adopted its first citywide invasive plant strategy over 10 years ago. As a result, bureaus have worked together and created effective community and other local, state, and federal partnerships. It is now time to re-up the city's commitment to protecting our parks, natural areas, urban forests, and green infrastructure. And as we all know, climate change is here, and it's opened the door to new dangerous invasive species. Today's presentation will show how the city can stay ahead of that challenge, and how Portland can continue to be a national leader in invasive species management and prevention. First, we'll hear from Bureau Directors of Environmental Services, Parks, and Planning and Sustainability. Mike, Adina, and Andrea, would you please join us at the dais? Welcome. Good morning. Who's on first?
Hi.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning. Madam Council President, members of the council, thank you for having us today and giving us an opportunity to talk about this important resolution. Today's resolution presents a proactive strategy that makes environmental and fiscal sense. By working together and taking an asset management approach, our bureaus are protecting valuable city infrastructure in the most cost-effective manner. To illustrate that point, you are going to see a presentation from staff. There's a particular picture I'd like you to pay attention to in that. It is a pipe that is completely clogged with Quagga mussels from Michigan. I can tell you from our bureau's perspective, a proactive approach to keeping those kinds of species out of our region will save us literally millions of dollars in maintenance costs every year. It's an important way for us to save, avoid those costs in the future. The resolution today before council strongly endorses a prevention-based strategy, stopping the arrival of new invasive animal and plant species before they wreak havoc, and effectively managing those that are already here. This preventive asset management approach is also a cost-savings approach. We believe that for every dollar we invest in prevention of these kinds of species from arriving and controlling them, we save up to $35 in remedial costs in the future. Today, we're asking council to adopt this updated strategy and resolution as the city's guiding plan on invasive species to save costs and to keep our multi-billion-dollar systems of natural and engineered assets working. And I'll pass it on to, I think, Adina's next. And I'll pass it on to, I think, Adina, who's next.
Thank you, Mike. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Adina Long, Director of Portland Parks and Recreation. Thank you for having us here today. Portland Parks and Recreation manages nearly 11,000 acres of shared public land across the city, from urban plazas to river docks, from developed parks to golf courses, and of course, Forest Park, which is our region's largest natural area. Our city's public spaces provide habitat for wildlife, support biodiversity, and deliver ecosystem services. They also serve as outdoor classrooms to teach environmental education and build the next generation of stewards. We also know that this shared land is providing important public health benefits to our community by filtering water, purifying our air, and mitigating the urban heat island effect. Invasive species pose challenges to these public resources, threatening the ecological health of the 8,000 acres of natural area managed by PPNR. Addressing invasive species management is an integral part of what we do as stewards of our natural areas. Our efforts are guided by our Natural Areas Restoration Plan and in accordance with our Integrated Pest Management Plan. Many of the investments proposed in options two and three, which you will see shortly, of this strategy would support frontline staff positions, increasing capacity to combat invasive species, improve natural area health, and increase community stewardship of our natural areas. Collaborations across city bureaus with other local and regional governments and community partners are critical to the success of these efforts. Invasive species do not acknowledge jurisdictional lines, and so coordination of invasive species research, best management practices, stewardship, and communication is vital. To this end, we appreciate the leadership of our partners at the Bureau of Environmental Services for tackling the work of drafting a citywide invasive species strategy, and are grateful to Andrea Durbin and the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability for their support. If council approves the strategy for this resolution, the city can work together to manage and control invasive species and get ahead of the curve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council President Commissioners. I'm Andrea Durbin, Director of the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. I'm pleased to be here today to support the invasive species strategy. As we know, Portland and the region face a number of challenges and stressors to our natural environment due to climate change. One result is an increase in invasive species, such as English ivy, which chokes trees and increases the risk of wildlife in our natural areas. The Bureau of Planning and Sustainability has and continues to play an important role in combating invasives. We included an invasive species policy in our comprehensive plan, Policy 7.12. Our work on invasive species dates back a while. In 1991, BPS, with the help of BES and others in the community, created the Portland Plant List, which includes a list of native and nuisance or invasive plant species. Then in 2010, BPS's Invasive Plant Policy Review and Regulatory Improvement Project resulted in a comprehensive update of the zoning code to improve invasive plant management in development and non-development situations. The zoning code currently prohibits planting invasive species as part of required landscaping or mitigation. BPS maintains this list, and we welcome suggestions for plants that should be added or removed. Once we have a number of suggestions, we initiate an update to that list. With the Portland Plant List as foundation, BPS continues to work to find opportunities to limit the spread of invasives in our natural areas and open spaces through the city's environmental overlay zones, the river plan, and other mechanisms. These efforts are critical for preserving and expanding our native species and the fish and wildlife that depend on them throughout the city. I'd like to thank BPS staff Mindy Brooks for her participation in the development of the invasive species project, and thank Director Jordan for inviting me to be a part of today's panel. Thank you so much.
I thank the three of you so much. Commissioner Fritz, do you have any questions of this panel?
No, I don't. Thank you very much for asking.
You're very welcome. Commissioner Yu-Da Lee?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, Mike, I thought the nastiest thing that you made us look at were failing sewer pipes, but I have to say the muscle-blocked water pipe is something like something out of a horror movie.
We're always attempting to one-up ourselves.
Thank you for that. I just ate breakfast, and now I feel sick. Who knew invasive species could be so fun? I just wanted to mention a couple opportunities. There's a local group called Rewild Portland that teaches basketry classes solely using invasive species like English ivy. So if any of you interested in learning how to weave baskets, there's that opportunity. And then also, of course, the Audubon Society Backyard Habitat Certification Program helps property owners create natural, native, low-maintenance gardens that benefit wildlife. So and also, there's volunteer programs where you can go rip the ivy up, which I'd like to sign up for, Adina, so.
Done.
Keep me in the loop. Thanks.
For sure.
Madam Council President, if I might, just in closing, as you can tell, this has been a collaborative effort between the bureaus, but the bureau's staff at BES really took a lead on this. I want to thank Caitlin Lovell and, under her direction, Paul Ketchum, Dominic Mays, Darian Santner, Ryan DeRocher, and Heidi Berg. This has been, again, a multi-agency and multi-year effort to get us to this point, and I really want to acknowledge their hard work.
Thank you so much. I have one question before you leave. I noticed that there are three funding options. What is your plan for funding this project?
Well, I can speak for our bureau, and we have built this strategy into our five-year plan, so we're fully ready to do that. I know that the bulk of the load, however, falls on parks with their large number of acres, and I believe Adina can speak to that.
Certainly. While we're doing some work now, certainly we're behind the curve, right? But this strategy, among many other management plans that we've been working on, will be rolled into the Sustainable Future work, so it is informing our alternative funding strategy moving forward. So it is included as part of the level of service work that we're hoping to fulfill.
Excellent. I had to ask that question. I would not be a good steward if I looked at, you know, this budget and not asked questions about how we would fund it, reminding the public that we have no ongoing new money. $100,000 is really no money at the city of Portland, and so I appreciate those answers. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll hear a brief presentation from Dominique Mays, Environmental Specialist from the Bureau of Environmental Services, and Rachel Felice, City Nature Manager from Parks. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please give us your name and go for it.
Thank you, Council President Hardesty, Commissioner Yu-Da Lee, and Commissioner Fritz.
Would you say that again? That's a nice ring to it.
I like that ring. Could say it in a deeper voice, too, if you want. I'm Dominic Mays, Environmental Specialist with the Bureau of Environmental Services.
Good morning, Council President Hardesty, Commissioner Yu-Da Lee, and Commissioner Fritz. I'm Rachel Felice. I'm the City Nature Manager for Portland Parks and Recreation. Thanks for having us today.
You're very welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Invasive species are plants and animals that come from other parts of the world that wreak havoc on our native habitats, human health and animal health, too, and infrastructure. The U.S. economy has costed about $120 billion a year. That's the cost of invasive species to the U.S. economy. That figure's a few years old. It's actually probably much higher now in 2020. Locally, folks have noticed for several decades a dramatic change in habitat conditions. This photo used to be a pretty typical scene in Forest Park of native forests swamped with ivy and non-native clematis. It's important to point out that not all species that arrive somewhere new are problematic. Only a small subset of those are actually invasive species and cause problems for us. So several decades ago, folks in Portland were really proactive and started looking at the natural areas and this change in habitat conditions and fostered new programs. You heard Director Durbin mention the Portland Plant List, which was adopted by this council in 1991. There's also programs such as the No Ivy League, created by Portland Parks and Recreation in 1994, which has been a model for programs across the country. So Portland really fostered this leadership in terms of a municipality taking a lead on invasive species prevention, control, and management. So we've had decades of success. We'll hear more about those successes in a minute, but we also have a suite of species on Portland's doorstep. And here is that image from Michigan, which Director Jordan mentioned. These are quagga mussels clogging a pipe at a municipal water treatment plant. So U.S. Fish and Wildlife has determined where these quagga and zebra mussels to establish here in the Columbia Basin. The hydropower industry alone will see costs of $250 to $300 million a year in maintenance. And you know that cost is going to be borne by the residents of this area, and similarly, at a local level, we can expect the same. So previously, Portland was really focused, and we still are, on our natural areas, our green assets. We are taking a lessons-learned approach from other municipalities and other parts of the country and focusing on our gray assets, pipes, sidewalks, pump stations, you name it. This council unanimously directed the Bureau of Environmental Services in 2005 to create an invasive plant strategy. Seven bureaus developed this. This was completed in 2008 and adopted by city council unanimously in 2009. It has become the city's guiding document on vegetation management, and extensive community and partner outreach was employed in crafting this. Two highlights of that 2008 invasive plant strategy are these two programs. One, at the Bureau of Environmental Services, the Watershed Revegetation Program. You can see that the original management targets, so our criteria for success, have been greatly exceeded or met over the last decade. And similarly, with Portland Parks and Recreation's Protect the Best program, which Rachel will talk about in a second, we have met those goals, which were considered kind of pie in the sky at the time of that 2008 strategy. People weren't sure we could actually do that. We conducted an extensive audit of the last 10 years of citywide work with invasive species and determined, with a third-party contractor, that 90% of the actions prescribed in that 2008 strategy have been met. Forty-four original actions there. And as Director Durbin mentioned as well, this project sprang directly from that 2008 invasive plant strategy, the Invasive Plant Policy Review and Regulatory Improvement Project. And this is where the rubber really hit the road with regards to invasive plant management within the city, Modified Titles 11, which is tree code, 29 Landscape, and 33 Development. So this was groundbreaking for a municipality to do this. This hadn't really been done before for a city, and this has been copied all over North America, sometimes directly from our documents. So imitation's the sincerest form of flattery, right? Want me to hit the button?
Sure. All right. So in terms of rubber meeting the road, this is an animation of Portland Parks and Recreation's program called Protect the Best. This is a program that was previously funded collaboratively with the Bureau of Environmental Services, and this program is in action. You'll see little dots popping up. Each dot that shows on this animation is an invasive species treatment in Forest Park, and each color is representing a different type of species that was being treated by this team. The Protect the Best is a small, nimble team of staff with the goal of preventing small infestations of invasive plants from spreading in our city's most ecologically healthy areas. The Protect the Best program was really innovative. At the time it was established, it got going in earnest in 2007. And it's an efficient and an effective way of delivering invasive species treatment. Instead of the more typical model of tackling invasive species where the infestation is heaviest, typically on the edge of our natural areas, this team goes into the most ecologically healthy areas and stops those infestations where they are before they get a chance to take hold. It efficiently protects healthy acres and tackles those invasive species before they get out of hand. You may have noticed that the dots and the pattern slowed over the last two years. That was due to some divestment from this program, causing us to lose some ground. We need, at this point, to reinvest, to fully fund that program, to go back and re-treat these acres and protect the gains we've made across the city through this program over the last decade-plus.
Advance.
Sure, that'd be great. All right. Now, I know this council has heard how strongly Portlanders feel about their parks and natural areas. In the Portland Insight Survey that was completed in 2019, respondents ranked having access to parks and natural areas as their top reason for appreciating living in this area, and that was true across age classes, across racial and ethnic groups, and regardless of how long the respondents had lived in the Portland area. It is our responsibility as a city to protect these parks and natural areas and an ecologically healthy state, not only for the biodiversity and ecosystem services reasons that you heard earlier, but also to honor what the people living here value about this place. To do that, we must work in collaboration with our local, regional, federal, and state partners, as well as community partners. As you heard from Director Long, invasive species aren't really good about stopping at the jurisdictional borders, and so we have to work with our neighbors on other sides of those lines to make sure that our best management practices are in line in terms of monitoring, treating, and controlling invasive species. This allows us to be most efficient and effective and proactive. Community partnerships and invasive species education is also a crucial part of natural area stewardship and any good land management practice.
So here we are in 2020, proposing our invasive species strategy. So it's that all-species approach. The previous strategy, of course, was just invasive plants. And it's really focused, not just on prevention, as you've heard about already, but also, as Rachel has mentioned, protecting our investments. A ton of work has been done in our natural areas, on private property, and on properties managed by us and our partners. A lot of blood, sweat, and tears has been expended in resources. We need to maintain those investments. The current strategy has been crafted by six bureaus, two of which we represent all of them here today, both Parks and BES, presenting to you. And this strategy employs an asset-management approach, which I think is pretty cool. It will assist us in identifying what risks are out there and how these risks might damage our natural areas and infrastructure. Since invasive species affect both green and gray assets, this is an important early step for the city in standardizing how we value these two types of assets.
All right. As you can see in this conceptual graph of watershed health, the investments that the city made after adopting the invasive plant strategy in 2009 resulted in an increase in watershed health as measured across a number of various city programs. Today, though, we're at a crossroads, and that's due to the increased pressures of climate change, increased population, and increased movement of people and goods worldwide. These are all the major pathways for invasive species infestations in our area. The strategy that we're talking about today has identified three potential funding options, as you all already noticed. Option one details the city's current level of investment for invasive species work, but due to the pressures that I just talked about, this will result in a loss of investment in the work that's been accomplished over the last decade-plus. It is a reactive approach. It's not preventative in nature, and this is where we are now. We're not winning this battle. Option two is a modest increase over current investment levels, and it starts to protect our previous investments, but it's still reactive and only helps us to keep from sliding further towards ecological decline, doesn't do anything to move us forward. Option three sees an increase in overall watershed health in natural areas and the protection of our investments we've made over the last decade. Option three has a focus on prevention and a focus on community engagement. It would better protect our natural areas and trees against invasive species yet to establish here, such as the Emerald Ash Borer, rather than responding to the rapid devastation they will inflict once they establish. This option will help us reduce the risk to both gray and green infrastructure, as Dominic mentioned. It will improve ecological health and engage more of our community in stewardship. To be clear, the question before the council here today, though, is not to select a particular funding option, but to vote on the adoption of the resolution to accept the Invasive Species Strategy 2020-2030 as direction for city bureaus to move forward in our work, combating invasive species, protecting infrastructure, improving the health of our natural spaces, and engaging people around what they love.
And those goals Rachel mentioned are encapsulated in six goals in this strategy. The strategy before you today also has a detailed work plan with success metrics identified to those work plans, actions, so that we know when we're successful. It also contains a detailed regulatory and pathways analysis. So where the city wants to go from here in terms of policy, and what are those pathways? How are invasive species getting to Portland? And if we can, we know those pathways, we can hopefully prevent those species from getting here, to have those costs down for the long haul. We are asking you here today to adopt this invasive species strategy as binding city policy. This will provide a recommitment to this proactive versus reactive approach and to provide cost savings over time. This strategy before you today represents almost two years of work of these six bureaus, and we are confident this is where Portland should be for the next 10-plus years. So with that, thank you.
Thank you both. I greatly appreciate that presentation. Commissioner Fritz, any questions for this? Commissioner Fritz, any questions for this panel?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Udaley.
Thank you very much. I would be remiss if I didn't remind the audience that this is going to be an extremely tight budget year, and so I hope that the bureaus, the six bureaus who have worked so hard together are creative in figuring out how we fund this package. I'm absolutely committed to this package. I think it's the right direction to go, but I also have to, I would not be doing my job if I didn't remind you that we don't have extra money, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council President.
Carla, do we have people signed up for public testimony?
Yes, we have six people signed up.
Would you call the first three, please?
The first three are Diana Gutman, Lisa DeBrucke, sorry about that, and Michelle Delapine. Please come on up.
Good morning, welcome. Please start.
Good morning, Madam President and Commissioners. So I'm definitely in favor of this specific agenda item for adopting the invasive species strategy. I think that this is a wonderful thing, and I just want to say thank you to the Parks and BPS for their presentation and advocacy for this, because this is shared land. And the climate change, it affects how the invasive species come to our land, and even going as far as to try to identify, you know, the six different pathways, that's huge. And so I hope that the council will vote aye on adopting this strategy. I believe that, based off of the presentation, option three is going to be probably the most beneficial for this strategy, because not only does it focus on prevention and community engagement, which is very crucial, because we are a community city, we are community oriented in this city, and again, this is shared land. So we want to be able to value that and let that prosper and grow. It also, you know, has a strategy of, you know, improving health, and that's really important, because when we have our lands being choked out by invasive species like ivy that is bringing down trees, people don't realize how strong these kinds of plants are in their own habitats, and they don't realize how, when a tree goes down or when pathways with rivers are blocked, it really has a major effect on our ecosystem. And so I think this is a great strategy. I also think that it's very impressive that in 2008, we first started implementing this, and since then, 90% of the action strategies that were presented were met. And because of that, the City of Portland is setting an example on how to take care of their environment. So I just, I thank you to everyone who's participating in it, and I know that option three is going to require more funding, but Commissioner Udaley brought up a very good point by working with community partners, and I think that it's very clever that community partners are even finding a way to adapt and work with these invasive species, like making baskets out of ivy. That is so clever. There's so much that can be done with these things, and I think it sets a really good example in taking it a step further of protecting our wildlife, protecting our lands, and teaching our community and the society how to recycle and be proactive.
Thank you so much. I forgot to mention that you each have three minutes each, and the light will go yellow, and there's a timer in front of you. She's an expert testimony person here, so I didn't have to tell her that. Thank you, welcome. Please introduce yourself and start.
Hi, thank you. My name is Lisa DeBrucke, and I'm president of Creative Resource Strategies. It's a woman-owned business certified by the State of Oregon, and I've been doing it for the last 18 years. I've spent about the last three decades working on a variety of natural resource and invasive species issues, and I'm the contractor that Dominique Mays referred to in his presentation that did the 10-year assessment of the first invasive plant strategy and helped lead with BES staff the development of the new strategy. I've spent the past 10 years focusing primarily on quagga zebra mussels and coordinate the Columbia River Basin Hydropower Vulnerability Assessment Team, which really helps look at how we can protect the Columbia River Basin and Portland from invasive species. There's just a couple of points that I wanted to make today. One is, it's one thing for City of Portland staff to say that they're a model for other municipalities, but I do work in 16 western states and the Canadian provinces, and I can assure you, in the work that I've done throughout those areas, that the first strategy did indeed, indeed, serve as a model, and this one will as well. I think this initiative is especially important as it relates to the livability of people in the Portland area. The protection of green assets is equally important as the protection of gray assets. And historically, in municipalities across the United States, cities have done a great job of estimating the life of its gray assets, and when big capital improvements need to be made, and when maintenance schedules need to be made. But we've not done as good a job with green assets. And thanks to developments in Australia and New Zealand, there are places in the United States that are starting to do this, and I think this strategy sets the high water mark for changing that paradigm in terms of how municipalities look at their gray assets. And lastly, I just wanted to mention that in a lot of the work that I do with regions of the country and other places, city councils and boards often ask, how long is it going to take for us to keep making this investment to when we no longer have to make the investment? And I can assure you, we are all in this for the long haul in terms of climate change and invasive species. They never go away. There's always a new one on the horizon. And so it's really important that the types of monitoring and other programs that are incorporated in this strategy are funded and implemented long-term so that the city can stay ahead of the curve. So as an Oregonian, I want to thank the city. I want to thank all of you for your service, for your vision, for your commitment to recognizing the importance of this strategy and supporting it to enhance Portland's livability through the protection, restoration, and enhancement of its green assets. Thank you.
Hi, welcome. You can pull the mic closer if it's comfortable. Please give your name, three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Michelle Delapine. Good morning to Commissioner Fritz, Commissioner Hardisty, and Commissioner Udaley. I represent a local perspective with invasive species. I work for the West Multnomah Soil and Water Conservation District, where I've worked for nearly 10 years on invasive species management issues. I've also been the past chair of the Ford County Cooperative Weed Management Area and have served two terms on the Oregon Invasive Species Council. And each of these organizations strongly supports the city adopting the next invasive species management strategy. Invasive species are second only to habitat destruction and the devastation they cause our ecosystems. And as others have noted, Portland is at the crosshairs of several new invasive species that are right on our doorstep. Some are already here. We have international commerce coming in by land, air, ocean, and rail, as well as an influx of out-of-state residents bringing contaminated yard equipment and potted plants with them, and all of these are immediate threats to our ecosystems here in Portland. We've had several close calls, including the Asian gypsy moth coming in on steel shipments from China, which would have, if we hadn't reacted very quickly with a EDR, Early Detection Rapid Response, we easily could have been facing devastation to our conifer trees that we love so dearly here in Oregon, as well as a human health hazard with respiratory hares coming off of the gypsy moths. We're currently facing a Japanese beetle infestation just on our borders in Bethany, and we also have successfully done a lot to eradicate the giant hogweed, which you probably have heard of. It's also a very grave human health hazard. I work directly with the residents, landowners, city staff, watershed councils, and many other environmental NGOs across Portland and the greater region, and many of the residents I work with go on to complete conservation work on their property through the backyard habitat conservation program. And I've seen firsthand that the 2008 strategy set in motion invasive species management far across just the borders of Portland and really set the stage for management across our region. To minimize economic, environmental, and human health impacts requires a very proactive approach, or we will face costly irreversible impacts to our people, places, and environment. Invasive species impact everyone, from houses, communities, immigrants, renters, homeowners, working lands, and industries. Please consider this local perspective and approve the invasive species strategy in front of you today. Thank you.
Thank you all. Colleagues, any questions? Thank you. Carla, would you call the next three, please?
The next three are Teri Preg Rigsby, Bob Solinger, and Clint Burfit.
Welcome. Please give your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Teri Preg Rigsby. Thank you for having me here this morning, Commissioners. I'm with the Tryon Creek Warricee Council, as well as the West Multnomah Soil and Water Conservation District, with Ms. Delapine was just testifying. I am here this morning to urge you to adopt the new 2020-2030 strategy. To give a little example of how important it is that we support our native species by eradicating our invasive species, I want to share a Smithsonian study that found that the decline in backyard birds were due to non-native plants, and that's because 96% of terrestrial birds rear their young on insects, and over 90% of the insects eat only one or a few native plants. So our efforts in removing invasive plants and other species, including insects and species such as mussels, really do help protect our native bird species and other natives. I ask you to reinvest in our natural areas and parks to ensure that we're maintaining the investments that we've put in over many years, and to protect these programs, which are proactive instead of reactive. They're really effective, they're efficient, and I look forward to seeing Portland continue to set an example for effective invasive species management and community engagement, which is a critical component of this program, as well as maintenance and data, collecting data through that program. So we can continue to be a leader in this and establish best management practices that can be used in other jurisdictions as well. So I hope that you support the adoption of this strategy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, President Hardisty, and Commissioner Udaley, and Commissioner Fritz. My name is Bob Solinger. I'm the Conservation Director for the Portland Audubon Society. We're here today to support adoption of this plan. We think the city's done a great job. We really appreciate the work of Dominic, and Paul, and Caitlin, and Rachel, and everybody else who put time and energy into it. As you've already heard today, you know, this is one of the most effective ways we can improve the health of our environment. It's not necessarily glamorous work, but if we want to get value out of the habitat we have left, this is how we do it. And conversely, if we don't do it, the risks to our economy and our environment are tremendous. So this is really one of those fundamental things that we've been a national leader on, we need to continue to be a national leader on. And that's the Early Detection Rapid Response, that's Protect the Best, and that's expanding the program. And I want to really hit on that, because we've kind of been stuck at Protect the Best in recent years, but we need to expand and do more. I fully appreciate the comment about the challenges with the budget. A couple of things there. One, we need to continue to invest in green infrastructure at BES through the rates. That's always in flux as to how we balance that gray and green infrastructure. It's going to be critically important, especially in this time of transition, that we maintain that emphasis on green. And number two, I really hope that we continue forward with the work that was being done on parks funding as well, because we really need to get that in a crawl. These are the programs that tend to get lost every year when we have a tough budget cycle in parks. So appreciate all the work that's gone into maintaining them in recent years, but we have a couple of opportunities in front of us that we really need to continue forward on. Audubon's really proud to partner with the city on these things, this effort, both through our protection of our own sanctuary adjacent to Forest Park, through work on public sites, volunteer work, through our backyard habitat certification program, that's already been mentioned, that we deliver in conjunction with Columbia Land Trust. That's engaged almost 6,000 landowners throughout the metro region. It is a national model. It's definitely on the cutting edge, and the city should be proud of having both city programs that are on the cutting edge, but also partner programs as well. We're really excited that the city is expanding this to address animals, because that's been a missing piece, really, in recent years. And as you already heard, gypsy moth is a challenge. That was one of the first things I worked on for Audubon, was doing bird surveys when they were spraying overhead in Forest Park to eliminate gypsy moths that had infested that area. We have some great programs there that we'd like to engage the city with. For example, we have a nationally recognized cat, feral cat reduction program that we were doing in conjunction with the Feral Cat Coalition, looking at humane solutions to reduce cat overpopulation in the metro region. That's become a standard nationally, really, for effectiveness and also doing it humanely in a way that brings people together. So I think there's a lot of opportunities there. So we encourage you to move this forward. We encourage you to be creative, and we're happy to work with you on that, as to how to fund it. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you start, Bob, I just want to remind you, and I know you know this, Parks is funded totally through the general fund, as is our houseless services, as is fire, as is 911. There are other bureaus that have specific money based on rates, based on et cetera, et cetera, right? Parks doesn't have that luxury. Fire and police don't have that luxury. It's all general fund. So we have what's in the general fund. Unlike the federal government, we can't go into debt. We can only use the money we have.
Absolutely, and I totally appreciate that, having served, I think, on more parks budget committees than anyone. I am hopeful of the fact that the process that was started last year, and I served on that committee as well, that was looking at different funding strategies for parks, was what I was referencing.
Oh, okay. I hope so, too.
Because we know that the current status quo isn't working.
Yes, yes. I'm totally with you there.
But thank you, fully appreciate that.
And as you know, I love parks, right? And I want parks to be fully funded, but I'm also a realist, and I can only spend what I have.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty, Commissioner Fritz, and Commissioner Udaley. My name is Clint Burfit. I work as the State Plant Health Director for the United States Department of Agriculture Animal Plant Health Inspection Service Plant Protection Quarantine. At PPQ, our mission is to safeguard agricultural trade, safeguard agricultural capacity, and protect natural resources from the threats of invasive species. As you've heard today, invasive species can severely impact food crops and forests and threaten farms and the environment. Our biggest challenge is that they're easily spread by people through the things that they import and the things that we pack when we're traveling. For years, we've been working closely with cooperators like the City of Portland to develop effective ways of mitigating the impacts of invasive species. And this small step, these types of collaborations, when multiplied, can have a great impact and help protect fragile ecosystems and food crops, not just here, but around the world. I'd say that we expect the work the City of Portland is doing is helping achieve our mission of protecting natural resources, safeguarding agricultural capacity, and facilitating safe trade by connecting us with a critical audience in a way that encourages positive action by the community. AFIS Plant Protection Quarantine greatly values the City of Portland moving forward with a comprehensive all-invasive species strategy. This allows us to leverage local capacity and resources, and we've worked with the City of Portland for decades and look forward to that continued relationship.
Thank you so much. One last thing I forgot to say, Bob, is have you talked to Multnomah County Animal Control about the feral cat program?
Yeah, they're a partner in this, Multnomah County, Washington County, and again, the Feral Cat Coalition, and it's just, so they've been a great partner. But I think, I think there's a whole world of opportunity on the animal side that the city could be great allies in as well, so we're really happy to see that piece of this puzzle being put in their place.
Thank you all. Colleagues, any questions? See ya none. Thank you so much. Carla, has anybody else signed up to testify?
No one else signed up. You didn't sign up. Someone is requesting to speak, but who didn't sign up?
Someone has asked to speak. We've got a little time, so who is it? Please come. Give your name. Three minutes, please.
Morning.
Morning.
I'm disappointed most of you are absent today.
Your name is?
My name is Courtney Shannon. I am here to address a part that you guys have brushed over and kind of missed.
I'm sorry, Courtney, this is not communication. This is specific to the subject at hand.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Which is the invasive species.
Can I please speak? This is my three minutes.
I just wanted to be, no, it's not your time. It is, I am the council president.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that you're speaking to the issue. Is that what you're speaking on?
If I would be allowed to speak, you would find out.
You will be if you answer my question.
Yes.
Thank you.
It is certainly relevant.
You've got your whole three minutes. Go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to know why it is nobody else was asked that question when they came up with the comment, Joanne.
Because you started talking about something that didn't appear to be related to the invasive species, so I just wanted to check.
By less than half a sentence.
You're wasting your time.
Yes, you are wasting my time. That's really, really abusive, Joanne. Wow. I am here to speak about the chemical warfare involved on the houseless in this action. I realize that there are a whole lot of great intent going out and killing things that shouldn't be here, but people shouldn't be one of them. And there is an unbelievable amount of reports that I'm hearing from the houseless community about how they've been sprayed.
I'm sorry, you are, this is not the issue that we are addressing.
How they have been sprayed and poisoned by these very things.
I'm going to ask you to go back to your seat. Please, if you're going to speak to the issue, you can. Otherwise, you're out of order. You are not speaking to the issue.
Putting chemicals in parks where people are sleeping is certainly speaking to the issue.
I'm going to ask you again, either speak to the specific issue, or I'm going to ask you to go take your seat.
That's a problem. It's killing people. And apparently, you're okay with it. That's disappointing, Joanne.
You're out of order. Thank you. Next. Please give your name. You've got three minutes.
Michael Callahan.
Hopefully, you're speaking to the agenda item as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like, encourage the adoption of this, but I would like some clarification. We have global warming going on, which in its nature has shown that the plant species in the northern hemisphere are moving north. This is an ecological process that is unavoidable. I would like to differentiate between the plants and the animals. Certainly, the animals are a far more dangerous invasive species, like the gypsy moth. The plants are less so. Now, an invasive species, the definition is really quite elusive. Virtually, everything on the North American continent is an invasive species. Apples are, you know, all the crops, all the stuff in the Willamette Valley. So what I see targeted here is English ivy. Now, an interesting thing about all these vine growths is that they are a byproduct of the increased CO in the atmosphere. The thing which absorbs the CO the easiest is the vines. So these vines grow prolifically with an increase of the carbon dioxide. So now you're contravening your desire to reduce the carbon usage in Portland if you go around killing all these English ivies or these plants that grow on vines. So it's kind of, you know, interesting strategy trying to eliminate invasive species. Most invasive species of plants are okay. Now, we're not going to be able to secure this environment that we have now with global warming going on, because like I said, invasive plants are going to be moving in. So I think a better part of our funds would be spent on these animals that are invasive species that seem to be a problem. And, you know, going off subject if I can, I think it's really too bad that the council doesn't allow people their three minutes to speak on whatever they want to speak on.
That's what the communications section is for. And you sign up in advance, and no one tells you what to talk about then. When we're talking about a specific issue, you have to speak to that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
That's why there's so much opposition here versus Multnomah County.
Thank you so much. I greatly appreciate you being here. Colleagues, any questions? Caller, we're ready for the vote. Fritz?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Gosh, this is giving me a trip down memory lane. I remember Tom McGuire and his work with Bureau of Planning on the Portland Plant List in 1991, which was about when I started getting involved. I was very glad to hear mention of the No Ivy League. The Sandra Deidrich Environmental Stewardship Spirit of Portland Award is named after its founder, and I spent many happy times pulling ivy before I realized that actually we need more systemic treatments and a massive approach to invasive species. Certainly, pulling it out by hand is one way to do it, and definitely what people should be doing in their backyards. But in terms of the Forest Park, for example, it's just massive, and it needs many more resources to be brought to there. Really appreciate Commissioner Sam Adams, who directed the Bureau of Environmental Services in 2005 to bring forward the first strategy. And then, of course, Commissioner Nick Fish, who in his first term being in charge of parks, was the one to bring it forward in partnership with, I think it was Commissioner Saltzman, in charge of BES, so environmental services, to do that. And so I really appreciate that Nick and his team worked on this last year, or have been working on this for quite some time, to bring this to council. And it's a tribute to his leadership, being in charge of both environmental services and parks, that we've got this fantastic update. I need to mention my support for option three. I'm glad to see that it was mentioned by Rachel Felice, who has done absolute decades of really great work, that this, too, is part of the funding option discussion for parks. It's not only the community centers and the recreational facilities and programs that parks have, that natural resources stewardship is absolutely part of what they do. And so that's why I will support additional funding via a new mechanism to make sure that we have adequate and sustainable funding for parks. And I hope that that discussion continues over the course of this year. Want to recognize also our community partners. Teri Pregg-Rigsby, who's not only been on the Tryon Creek Watershed Council, but has been elected to the West Multnomah Soil and Water Conservation District multiple times, that helped get the tax base passed for that. Linda Robinson and Bob Solinger from the East Portland Soil and Water Conservation District. Of course, no discussion of natural resources conservation could be complete without Mike Kautz's name being mentioned. And just so many people who are recognizing that this is an important, both problem that we have to deal with and opportunity. One of the things I learned is that although ivy may look nice, it's actually, or some people think it looks nice, it's actually a green desert, and it stops multiple other species from growing. So when you rip it out, not only new ground cover establishes itself, but also new midstory and higher plant, and trees grow in. So that's why it is crucial for our climate change, our climate crisis actions, that we make sure that we have a healthy understory and midstory, as well as a healthy ground cover. I'm very pleased to vote aye.
Udaly?
Well, thank you for the presentation, and I'm just going to say thank you to everyone that Commissioner Fritz just mentioned. And I appreciated the photo of the trillium. I basically grew up in the woods, and I was trained from a very early age that you do not touch the trillium. So I thought I would share that here now. I vote aye.
Hardesty? Two years of work, six bureaus in collaboration, and community partners. You should all be proud of the work that you've done to get us to this point. This is a visionary strategy and proposal that you have placed in front of us. But once again, I cannot make any commitment of dollars or resources, because we are not at that place in our budget deliberations as of yet. Know that I am absolutely committed to this invasive species program, as well as the parks, and all the wonderful things that parks brings to our community. We will be having robust conversations over the next six months. You can be guaranteed. And I am very thrilled to vote aye. The resolution has passed. Caller, please read number 57.
Amen Sidewalk Repair Program to Update the Appeals and Hearing Process.
Commissioner Udaly?
Thank you, Madam President. This code change seeks to move the hearings for sidewalk assessment appeals from City Council to the City Hearings Office. These changes are being made per City Council request, and this was particularly important to Commissioner Fish. We also received a letter in support from the Auditor's Office, which is always a good thing. The City Hearings Office is simply better equipped to deal with these requests, and will ensure continuity with other bureau practices to handle similar processes. PBT staff Matt Grum and Alex Baharano are here to answer any questions that council may have.
Commissioner Fritz, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
I just want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you. It almost pulled my hair out at the hearing that we had here at City Council, and Commissioner Fish said it best when he said, why are we hearing this, right? Thank you so much for making this correction. This is certainly the right thing to do. Caller, is anyone signed up to testify on this issue?
Let's see. No, no, oh, sorry, 57. I had it. Sorry. We have two people signed up. Diana Gutman and Charles Bridge Crane Johnson.
Please, join us at the front. Hi. Introduce yourself once again, and you have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Diana. Good morning, Madam President and Commissioners. I think that this is an important agenda item for the sidewalk repair program. I do a lot of walking, my husband and I. We go on a lot of walks in the city. And even by where we live in the northeast area, a lot of the sidewalks are not safe. They're cracked, they are raised from tree roots that are breaking through the cement. And with all the additional constructions, some of the sidewalks are closed, which leaves the broken sidewalks for pedestrians to walk on. And it's, this is something that is a risk factor, because a lot of people should have the opportunity to explore the city, whether it's, you know, by transit or even being a pedestrian and doing this on foot. And, I mean, earlier, we heard in previous presentations how the parks is what's most desirable about Portland City. And to be able to go out and explore is part of being a Portlander. And so I think that this is really crucial, so the people who reside here have the opportunity to maneuver the city safely and enjoy what the city has to offer. So I'm in favor of this.
Thank you, Diana. I want to, I think we did a very short version of what this agenda item is. This agenda item is really about the appeal process, right? So if you have a broken sidewalk outside your home, there's an expectation that you fix it. And if you don't fix it, then the city is obligated to come out and repair it, right? And then they send you a bill, right? And then if you don't like the bill that you got, you appeal that process. This will fix a error in how we do that process. When I first got here, there was an appeal around a sidewalk that somebody, the city had repaired, and the gentleman was challenging the bill itself. But the City Council was the one that had to make that decision. We don't think we're the appropriate people to make that decision. We think that we have processes in place that are better and have more expertise around that issue, right? So we are voting today to take the City Council out of that appeal process and make sure that there's a hearings officer that makes that decision versus us. Makes sense?
That makes perfect sense. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
After you taking the time to explain this to me, I am in full support of this, because I do think that there should be more direct procedures. And the purpose of the council is to be able to hear and set policies, but when it comes to taking actual legal matters.
Yes.
That's what the attorneys are for.
Yes, that's what we thought, too. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good morning, Charles. Introduce yourself.
Good morning, Madam President. Charles Bridge Crane Johnson. I'm very glad that somebody else got to say that before I did, to say Madam President, when either two of you are passing around for your six-months terms, though I certainly wish you could get four-year presidency terms, unlike that certain person in DC. I want to thank John Wong and Lee Munson for their work on this. I do wish that when things like this came before the council, that people doing the preparation were encouraged to give little dashboard nuggets. It would be nice to know how many people feel rightly or wrongly, depending on how the situation worked out, that they were, that the sky is falling, the world is ending because they had to pay some money to fix the sidewalk in front of their house. And I think that makes the transparency sheet a little sketchy when we say that there's no budgetary impact. We know that John Wong and Lee Munson had to use part of their time to fill out these forms, and we should know about how many potential cases might have gone to the hearings officer last year. So I just want to encourage all the city bureaus that have to put up with me when they're watching the screens in their offices to think about asking the Commissioners, including little dashboard nuggets, to say, last year there were only three sidewalk appeals in the whole frickin' city of Portland, or there were a lot. And so we know what the burden for the hearings officer is. The hearings officer needs to know what their caseload is going to be. So I look forward to you finding, oh, there's a person on the phone. There's three of you. There's a quarter. So thank you, and PBT, and three ayes coming, I hope.
Commissioner Fritz has been here from the beginning, Charles. It's you who was late. Anybody else signed up? Caller?
Those were the only two who signed up.
Excellent. This is a first reading, and so it will be moved to a second reading. Please read item 58.
Authorize a contract for $4 million with Conduent State and Local Solutions, Inc. to provide ongoing photographic traffic enforcement services for the city's current photographic enforcement system.
Commissioner Udaly?
Thank you, Madam President. This ordinance will allow the Chief Procurement Officer to improve an interim contract with Conduent State and Local Solutions, Inc., the vendor that is currently contracted to provide for the photographic traffic enforcement system since 2010. There are two service contracts, one for fixed speed cameras and one for red light cameras. Both contracts expire March 31, 2020, and this ordinance would allow us to guarantee continued service while the new competitive RFP is underway. I know my colleagues might be concerned about why we're seeking authorization to extend a contract that originally expired last year and is set to expire again soon. I will ask staff to explain the delay from their perspective, but I do want to share that this is the contract I've spoken to the mayor and his staff about several times over the last couple of months, asking for procurement to prioritize, including at our last work session on traffic enforcement. It's been very frustrating for me how long this process has taken. We authorized this new contract work in June of last year, and procurement's timeline has it scheduled for completion by August or September of this year. I'm unclear why it's taking so long, and would love some assistance in getting it completed sooner, as this is a high priority for the Vision Zero program. So here to give us more details about this extension and to answer our questions is Bob Delgezi from Portland Police, Sergeant John Holbrook, and Sergeant John Holbrook from Portland Police. I hope that's who's here.
That is correct.
Okay, good, because there was a little last-minute change. Welcome, and please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Just before I have them speak, I want to just say that I met yesterday morning, and we had a very detailed conversation about the expansion of this request. And my questions have been answered, so I don't want you to feel like you have to go through all the excruciating detail that I required you to do earlier this week, but it would be good to put on the record information about why the delay, and then what your process will be moving forward. So just wanted to save you a little bit of energy there.
Okay, I appreciate that. My name is Sergeant John Holbrook. I'm with the Portland Police Bureau, the Traffic Division. I supervise the photo enforcement program. And with me is Bob Delgezi with Portland Police Bureau. Just changed fiscal, it's now.
Yeah, what do you do?
Business Services Group.
Business Services.
Business Operations Manager.
Welcome, both.
So I have a short slide presentation, and hopefully that will answer most of the questions, and I will be happy to answer any other questions that may come forward. So we're here today to ask for continuation of the city's current photo enforcement contract with the current vendor, Conduent, for reasons we're about to outline. Photo radar, the photo enforcement van, is the longest-standing photo enforcement program in the city, an often-requested speed enforcement tool. Photo enforcement, specifically the red light and fixed speed programs, are also among the Vision Zero action programs. Enforcement is not the only action in the Vision Zero plan. There are numerous actions: street design, speed management, traffic safety education, public information and outreach campaigns, all combined in the effort to eliminate. public information and outreach campaigns, all combined in the effort to eliminate traffic deaths in the city of Portland. To achieve the Vision Zero action of reducing speed and dangerous driving behavior, P-Bot and PPB approached council last summer seeking authorization to engage in a competitive solicitation of the photo enforcement system that will result in a five-year initial contract. That future contract will enable us to upgrade and expand the photo enforcement system. In September of 2018, we began gathering information and collecting data regarding the referral for proposal, or RFP. In November, we actually began writing the RFP, knowing that the contract with Conduent was going to expire in March of 2019. At the beginning of 2019, we actually started working with procurement to get their input on the process. In June, well, in March, we had a contract extension signed for one year. In June, we gained authorization from the city council to go forward with the RFP. In October through December, the procurement office and BTS continue to help us make changes and perfect the RFP. In December, it was actually published. We actually, I have been in this position for approximately two and a half years, and this is the first time I have ever done an RFP. I've been a police officer for about 27 years, so this is somewhat of a new proposal or a new job for me. And I had actually no idea how long it was going to take to go through the process. Looking back, I should have started earlier, not knowing exactly the hiccups that were going to come and the steps we actually had to go through. Being as it our contract does expire, the one-year extension does expire in March 31 of 2020, and the RFP has been published, we expect to have a new contractor picked sometime in March, and negotiations regarding the contract beginning after that, shortly thereafter. And ultimately, due to the complexity of the RFP and its multiple requirements, very technology-heavy, we did underestimate the timeline, and the RFP currently is posted, and open for submissions. The, sorry, I started to ad lib a little off my little script, so I got sidetracked.
I do have a question. Yeah. Thank you for that. I am curious, it looks like the new RFP process will wrap up this summer. How will that align with this contract extension of 18 months?
The RFP actually should hopefully wrap up, and we have a new contractor selected by the end of March. The RFP is out for, has been published already, and should close at the end of January. Evaluations and selection should go through February and March, and by the end of March, we should have a selection process. Then the process of negotiating the contract begins. Once that is finished, if we have a new contractor, then we would have to wind down operations with Conduent and spin up the operations with the new contractor. The gap contract that we're requesting would cover the time from April 1 until the time we have a new contract selected and signed with the new contractor.
So it's up to 18 months?
The reason we're asking for 18 months is, after speaking with procurement and BTS, negotiations, I've been told, can take anywhere from four to six months. It can also take anywhere from four to six months to wind down with one contractor and start operations with a second contractor. Granted, that's only a 12-month window. However, looking back at the length and the delays of this process, I anticipate there could possibly be some delays in the upcoming process. So we wanted to ask for a longer range of time to account for any unforeseen hiccups that may come around, so we don't have to come back to council and ask for another extension.
I understand that, and I think that's a wise move, but what I'm trying to get at is, if we do complete that process, and we do choose a new vendor, and we have a year left on the existing contract, is there a contractual obligation to pay up through the 18 months, or can that contract end sooner?
That's a good question. There is a clause in the contract that allows either party to terminate the contract with 30 days' notice.
Great, thank you.
So the answer is, the short answer is yes.
Yeah, because it's extraordinarily expensive, and I don't want to be paying this company to do nothing for us if we go with another vendor and we're paying them, so.
Agreed. I agree 100% on that. So in short, the gap contract would allow us to continue services and continue providing photo enforcement services throughout the city after April 1 and continue through until we have a contractor approved and a contract signed. Without the gap contract, services and the photo enforcement program would end on March 1. The conditions of the gap contract would continue the same conditions and terms as the current contractor. And at this point, I thank you for your time, and I'm willing to answer any other questions you may have.
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Fritz, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank Commissioner Udaley and your staff for your diligence on this. I share your concerns and appreciate that this is necessary to make sure that we can continue doing photo radars.
Yes, thank you so much. Has anyone signed up, caller, to testify on this issue?
Yes, we have four people signed up.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
The first three, please, coming up are Charles Bridge Crane Johnson, Maggie, and Maggie may not be here. We'll go with Diana Gutman then.
All right.
Good morning, Madam President, Commissioners. My name is Diana Gutman, and I'm in support of this agenda item. I understand that we're trying to extend the contract. And the Vision Zero Action Plan, you know, it seems like it's working. It seems as though, you know, there has been a reduction because of the photo radar and the speeding radars. Those things are really, really important when it comes to, we have so many people who travel. We have so many people who use public transportation, whether it's on buses, or they're actually using vehicles, and even with our bikers, which is technically a vehicle, they have to obey the laws of the road. And so, you know, public safety is very important to me, and I think that if they're needing to extend this out in order to continue to enforce public safety, then I think that this is something that is necessary. I did have a question in regards to the 30-day notice cancellation fee or cancellation clause. I was wondering, is there a cancellation fee that we would have to pay the current vendor to get out of it, or we just submit a 30-day notice? Okay. That's really my only question, so I'm in support of that.
Thank you. Who's next?
His name is called for.
Okay, Charles.
Good morning, Madam President Hardesty.
Good morning.
That's what I wanted to say. Madam President Hardesty, and Commissioner Fritz, and Commissioner Udaley. I hope that as you've gone through this, there are a lot of things you haven't had time to say, and that, you know, we're in a strange situation, where if the election goes badly in some seats and good in other seats, the only remaining commissioner that'll be here a year from now is Commissioner Hardesty. And so we have to rely on the institutional knowledge of our departments. And I hope that Commissioner Udaley will create a mirror in the Bureau of Transit of everything that has happened with the police department for this contract, so that really, when we hear the police coming and saying, we're short 10 million officers, we're on overtime all the time, this assignment almost never should have been in the police department. It should have been in the Bureau of Transportation, only limited by whatever laws of Oregon. You know, Oregon has some strange laws about speed traps and making sure police departments don't become excessive revenue machines. But if we're short on police resources, we should have found a way to manage this program inside the Bureau of Transportation, leaving cops free to actually do on-the-ground Vision Zero work. And so I hope that with the complexities of having a police bureau under one commissioner and the Bureau of Transportation under another commissioner, that Commissioner Udaley still felt that there's some resiliency where we can get, instead of having a highly-paid, I didn't notice, I think it's a sergeant that testified, and I was very impressed that he admitted right up that, wow, this RFP crap is crap, that takes a lot of time. And, you know, when we talk about continuity and y'all delivering good governance to us, you know, it's hard to name all the police chiefs this man has had to work under in the last four years. So I don't know when this RFP process, I didn't catch note down when this RFP process started, but I hope that we'll get going. And the other thing is, it's like, it seems strange to me that we didn't have a big enough public presentation to talk about, are there cities that never, ever pay anything for red light cameras, because there are laws that let the red light camera program cover its own costs? So I'll be looking forward to engaging with the RFP process and seeing, there's no reason for us to pay anybody to do anything. We should have red light traffic fines and fees set high enough so that that program covers its own costs and actually brings revenue in, and there's never a $4 million budget item. This next RFP hopefully can be tweaked so that all the presenters will come in and say, hey, Portland, this won't cost you anything, you have existing infrastructure cameras, the only expense is if we build some fancy mobile Vision Zero speed cameras that we can take around to hotspots on short notices. So that would be beautiful if that's in there. I'm sorry I didn't prepare to comprehensively say what's in there, but there's some great ideas to float around. Thanks very much, Commissioners.
Thank you, Charles.
Madam President, if I could just respond.
Yes, please.
First, just to be clear, this is a partnership between P-Bot and PPB, and I believe because of state law, this contract falls squarely in the hands of PPB.
Thanks.
If I could have assumed responsibility, I would have. And then, secondly, I'm actually concerned with the impact of fines and fees on low-income community members.
Thank you.
And so full cost recovery for this program would be onerous, and also, we don't get to set the fines ourselves, and we get a very tiny, tiny sliver of that fine. This is not a revenue generator for the police bureau or for the city of Portland. What I'm more interested in is getting some real competitive bids, because I think what we're being charged is exorbitant, and I'm hoping to find a much better deal for the city, or that we find a much better deal.
Thank you very much for all that engagement.
Yeah.
Lightning.
Yes, my name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Super Karma. Again, I'm in full support of Vision Zero, I just don't like the direction we're taking with the red light cameras. I think number one, it's a scam. Number two, they banned it just recently in Texas by Greg Abbott, has signed off. They abandoned it in numerous other states. Again, this is a money-making machine, and that's all it is. And there's been a lot of complaints on people where they look at the images, and they might be picking a certain group of people out just by the images and then transferring it over. Who's monitoring that to make sure certain people aren't being put into this position to pay these outrageous fines that can run up very high, very fast? Again, I think this whole camera system is unconstitutional. In my opinion, the city improperly delegates its police powers when it contractually outsources its statutory obligations to a for-profit third-party vendor. Again, you're giving this vendor so much power, so much control, that when they take that image, they know who that person is, where they live, what time they were at this location. To me, this is an invasion of my privacy. And again, what really dictates how they win in court is who's sitting in that seat at the time. Do they have a clear picture of that driver at the time? Again, this technology does not work all the times. And this company, Conduent, if you pull up the records in Florida, they've been hit with serious fines, they've been stopped, they don't follow through on their contracts. Again, I don't want this company to have a contract. Again, it's by the same name in Florida, you can pull that up. So again, I think a better alternative is to extend the timeframe on the yellow light. It's been proved that that does decrease accidents and, again, add more signs. And again, I'd like to know exactly how much revenue is being produced. What's the total amount per year off of this type of a scam, which I call it a scam? Again, to my great Governor Brown, that I really do like you, but we never seem to get together for lunch, how much money does the state actually make off of this? How much money does Multnomah County actually make off of this? How much money does the city actually make off of this? How much money does the police? Again, this is being paid by the fines and the fees, and correct me if I'm wrong, this doesn't come out of the city coffer. This is based upon their fines to get the most they can get, to place the most cameras where they can place them, and to take advantage of people throughout this city. Again, I find it unconstitutional. I propose a complete ban on the red camera system, such as Greg Abbott in Texas. Ban this, get rid of it, and get rid of Conduent. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lightning. Have a good day. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Are there any more people to testify, caller?
That's all who signed up.
This is the first reading. It will now move to a second reading. But before I gavel out, I want to respond to some of the things that we heard with public testimony. When I talked to Sergeant Holcomb and to P-Bot, my major concerns were whether or not the fines were so high that low-income people were being unduly impacted by those fines. What I was told by Sergeant Holcomb was that they could get the fine greatly reduced. So if you go to class, you don't have to pay the fine, right? But the class costs almost the same price as the ticket, right? But if you go to the class and pay to go to the class, then the ticket is forgiven, right? You can get the class greatly reduced, but the police bureau must come up with a better mechanism to actually let the public know that low-income people, people who don't have a lot of resources, can get those fees waived. And so I will be working with Portland Police Bureau and P-Bot to make sure that the data that we're collecting will tell us very clearly by next year, who's being impacted, who's having to pay these fines, who's showing up at the classes, and whether or not we are having a detrimental impact on people who can ill afford these fines. So I just want you to know, I hear you loud and clear, and most of your questions were the questions I asked behind closed doors. Commissioner Fritz, do you have any comments that you want to make?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Udaley.
I'll just add that these, we have, I believe, four cameras in the entire city. They've been carefully placed. We've chosen high-crash corridors where speeding and red light running are a major concern. They've shown a dramatic reduction in speeding and red light running. They are safer, less biased, and I want to say more cost-effective, but now that I'm painfully aware of the cost of this contract, I don't know if I can claim that, should be more cost-effective way to discourage people from endangering themselves and others on our roadways. But like I said, I'm very concerned with equity issues around this. Who is it impacting? And in particular, the burden that it may place on low-income residents. So P-Bot and PPB are exploring policy considerations related to ability to pay, and the Vision Zero Task Force is also looking at equitable enforcement. So I'm looking forward to their recommendations.
This item has been moved to a second reading. Excellent. In that case, we are adjourned. In that case, we are adjourned.